Thank you. Today is October 7, 2019. Welcome to the Millbrae Planning and Commissioner meeting. The first one on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance.
To the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberally and just as one.
Is your mic on? Vice Chair Quigg, absent.
We got one more? Good thing we got quorum tonight. So we have an agenda review at the request of the staff, item number eight, to be heard first on the agenda as is a consent item. Does anybody, does any commissioner have any comment on that? Do we need a motion and a vote, you think?
You can just move that around.
So let's go for the meeting minutes first, and then after that we can before new business.
Put it after, yeah, that sounds good.
Meeting minutes on June 3, 2019.
If I may through the chair?
Yes, please.
I'm fine with most of it. I just have one thing on the item for 316 Juanita. I did request, and it's actually in these notes, that in these minutes, that if there is a dissension, it would be good to know the reason why. And in this one was opposed by Commissioner Quigg without the reason. So I think that's important to note. I'm not sure if you can identify that in, within the explanations here, or if we need to wait to get that back. I'm trying, I was trying to remember. I'm not sure it's because of, it might be because of the setback exception, but I just, you know, it's hard to know. Was it the setback exception? Should we be okay with that? I mean, I'd like to, I always liked, if there's a dissension, I'd like to know what the reason was. And I did make that comment even in these minutes, so, at that meeting, so.
Well, staff will add that.
Can we make sure to look it up, though, and add it to make sure that it's correct?
Yes. So bring it back?
Do we, do we need to bring it back, or can, how do we?
I mean, I think we have your direction clear, as long as we have that stated and we can handle it administratively.
Move to approve?
Okay.
I'll motion. Oops, sorry.
Sorry. We'll do it the other way.
Okay. I'll motion to approve the minutes with that change in, we flipped.
Yeah.
I was faster.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Joe and a second by Commissioner Davis with the changes on the dissension, on the detail as to why the dissension happens, right?
Yes, with the addition, it's not really a change, but with the addition to make sure on 316 Juanita, to have that comment included, please.
Very well. Your votes, please. Three to nothing. We've got to get one minute today, right?
That was it.
Yep. So, public communication, this is reserved for people wishing to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. And for any speaker who wish to speak, please fill out a speaker slips. You've got up to three minutes per speaker. And I don't have any speaker slip in front of me. Does anybody want to speak on public communications? Seeing none, we'll close public communication. Next item is the consent calendar item. This is on Gateway 200 Rawlins Road. Planning Commission considering parcel map application for the merger of the lot to determine whether the map conforms to the requirement of Chapter 10.15, Article II of the Millbrae Municipal Code. This parcel map is for the gateway at Millbrae Station, TOD 2, project located at 200 Rawlins Row. The purpose of this action is to, okay. Consent item, so. Does anybody want to make a motion and just approve it?
Yeah, sure. I apologize. Yes, there was one quick resolution before a commission takes, I'm sorry, one quick correction before a commission takes any action. So on the resolution, just at the tail end, there was an indication that the resolution would be passed if it is on today's date, and that date was erroneous, so I've made that correction already. So before you, you have the corrected date for tonight.
Just the date corrections on the resolution.
That was it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Your votes, please. Approved three to nothing. Subject to a 10 days appeals period, correct?
No.
Not really? Yes, okay. Very well. New business, 401 East Millbrae, study session to receive information on the design review permit applications for the modification to an approved specific development plan, design review, master assigned programs and parking variance for the Moxie Hotel projects in advance of the future public hearing. Info item. Director Meisler?
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Chair. Appreciate it. Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Brad Meisner, Director of Community Development. So tonight, we have before us an information item. Staff is bringing this forward to inform the Planning Commission about a pending project that we have that is underway. The application has been filed. We are in the process of undertaking environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And so this really is just an opportunity tonight to learn about the project. We're going to give a quick, brief overview. We have the applicant here then to speak to you in detail about their project. But really, again, it's just an opportunity to hear about the project tonight, ask any questions that you may have, and also a little bit of a study session on design. One of the ideas that we've been having is that for larger, more substantial projects for the city, it makes some sense in sort of the concept form to come forward to Planning Commission and perhaps City Council, so that we can have more of a community conversation about the project in advance of formal public hearings, right? So the idea is that people can find out about the project, have opportunities to learn about it, to have public comment, all before that all ends up at a public hearing. So we'd like to have opportunity for outreach. So quickly, I have about six or seven slides just to talk to you a little bit about the project, and then again, I'll introduce the project team. So again, this is a Moxie Hotel located at 401 East Millbrae Avenue. And you'll know the site. This is the site where the existing Aloft Hotel and Weston Hotel is. So by way of background, and it's, you know, it's there on the east side of 101 Freeway, just south of Millbrae Avenue. Just by way of background, this is a site that was originally approved through a precise development plan back in 1985, approved by council. Initially, there was the thought that there would be three hotels at that site. It's understanding that sort of a softening market is why the third hotel was never built. I think it was also envisioned at a, sort of a lesser scale than the proposed hotel you're seeing before you this evening. So one of the applications that they will need is to come back and sort of amend the underlying entitlement, the precise development plan. But also at that site, as you've probably seen, or the community has seen, there have been improvements going on at the Weston and Aloft, so they've been going through some modifications to improve those two hotels as well. This particular hotel was filed back in April 15 of 2019. So staff had a chance to look at it sort of in a preliminary design phase, and were able to work with the applicant just a little bit before we even got here tonight on some of the design issues that we were seeing right off the bat. Again, the existing site, this is just an aerial view showing a little more detail. To the right here, this is the actual Weston Hotel, and here is the Aloft, sort of in a little bit of a semicircle site. And the Moxie would be right along this backside where there's existing parking, and we'll get into that site plan a little bit more. So it would still be the same ingress and egress to the project site, so nothing there much is changing, but they would be seeking a parking variance because they would be taking up some of the existing parking. And again, that will be for a future, future, part of the future hearing down the line to talk about the reasons why, some of the parking analysis that's being studied now, and also transportation demand management measures that would be part of the project to sort of help assess some of that parking loss. The proposed project itself is a six-story hotel, about 71,000 square feet, 209 guest rooms. And again, as I said before, it'd be constructed on the existing parking lot just south of sort of the Aloft Hotel. The Moxie concept is a little bit different than standard hotels in that the rooms themselves are very small by nature. They're 150 to 200 square feet. Then the idea behind those rooms is that really the guest experience, and certainly I'll let the project team speak to that, but the guest experience is a place to stay for, you know, a night or business travelers. But the notion is that all the lobby area is really where all the communal gathering will happen, where you're dining and you're working, and, you know, there are going to be outdoor spaces. And so that's the idea, is to have a place for people to sleep, but really to have community and that sort of thing down in the lobby level of the hotel. Here is the proposed site plan. You can kind of see, although a bit faint here, you can see where the proposed location of the hotel would be, showing sort of the views off to the north and to the south respectively. I'll get into this. So here's the schematic design that was submitted to the city on April 1, 2019. As you can see, sort of has this, this shell around it that had these interwoven shapes. There was really a nice story behind it. The designer talked to us about the takeoff patterns of the airlines and the airplanes off from SFO, or from the, from the airport. And so that was sort of the idea when you looked at sort of the patterns and the shapes that were made, when you looked at all the different patterns of the airlines, that sort of formulated this design approach. So the idea behind this was, well, is that a little bit too modern for Millbrae? I think through some of the larger projects, the TOD projects, we really did have a lot of conversations about design in this community. And so that's one thing that the city planning staff is thinking about. We've been talking about that with, with our city manager, and we're getting ready to embark on a little bit more in-depth analysis about what really is the Millbrae style? Is it, is it architecture that really should be compatible with our existing style of what we have? Or should it be one-off genuine architecture of a very high quality? And so I think that's dependent on the place and the context. And here, I think we have a site that has the two existing hotels, is a little bit away from the central core of the city. So I think there's some latitude for a lot of design interpretations there. That said, this particular design, we weren't quite certain about, we gave some design comment back to the project team, and they've gone back and refined it. And actually, they've come back with a much more modern look and feel to the proposed hotel. At this moment, this is, this is far from fully finished, but this is what the latest proposal is. Kind of the intermix of the white, semitish sort of plaster siding, the forms that you can see sort of the in and out of all the different rooms and the window styles. And then as the building kind of goes down the elevation, it turns into a different color plaster. The ground floor lobby, again, is to be programmed with a tremendous amount of activity and dining, as well as the outdoor spaces. Here's another view of that same elevation. Some playfulness with the signage and color. And so then, you know, we haven't even done a deep dive into sort of public art and other sort of amenities that might be part and parcel of the project. One of the things we noted in the informational staff report was that there is a desire to have outdoor space as part of this hotel. And so here, you can sort of see the site plan, where it would be programmed with things like fitness space and place to sit and dine and place to just sort of contemplate, and then also just sort of pathways and landscaping that I think might be a real nice addition and amenity to, to the hotel. Here's some imagery of different types of design inspirations and ideas of things that might be within that outdoor space. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the project team. So they are here this evening to talk to you in more depth about the project. You know, they will be seeking, obviously, the design review permit that you're accustomed to, so we'll be looking at that. We'll be looking at the amendment of the actual site, the master site plan. Again, as I said before, right now, they're anticipating a parking variance. And then last but not least, they are looking to have a new billboard sign where, you might know where the, the existing Aloft sign is, right off of the on-ramp from 101 to Millbrae Avenue. So they'd be looking to replace that sign with a new billboard sign, and the city would be actively having a conversation about what type of advertising would occur on that, and whether or not there's any chance for city to have advertising on that sign as well. So we're about, we're talking through some of the mechanics of how that would happen. As it stands right now, the city's sign code would not allow for advertising on, on anything other than public signage. So there's a chance that this could be in the form of a sign amendment that comes forward, and there may be another pathway as well. So just wanted to give you a little bit of heads up on that. And then so tonight, what we're hoping to do, just sort of in this information, sort of as a study session, is really, you know, hear from you, I think it would be useful to both staff and also the applicant, to hear from the Planning Commission about ideas that you have and feedback that you have about urban design and architecture, signage, landscaping, and ask any questions that you have, right? So this is your idea, just to really learn more about it. And then we're going to take that feedback, and we're going to continue gathering more public input as they begin to form their, their plans and then move into the formal public hearing. So with that, I'd like to introduce Kevin. Kevin, you know, here. And have him walk you through their proposal.
Are you, I gotta load it up. Do you know where it is? Right here. Good evening. My name is Kevin Tizalo with Starwood Capital Group, and I wanted to first introduce our firm. We've been involved in the development, ownership, and operations of hotels for over 20 years, over 3,000 properties from economy to luxury. We currently own 600 hotels worldwide, including several in the Bay Area, from San Jose up to Napa. Our firm purchased the existing Weston and Aloft properties in February 2018, and as Brad mentioned, we've been investing significant dollars in the renovation and modernization of both the guest rooms and public spaces in those two properties. The continued operations of these hotels have contributed over $5 million annually to the general fund, and we estimate that a third hotel would generate an additional $1.75 million annually. As Brad mentioned, there was previous conceptual approvals for 140 Key Element Hotel as recently as 2010. And with the evolution of the travel and lodging markets, we believe our proposed Moxie Hotel will provide a more market-appropriate offering to local travelers, combining amenities like social spaces, workplaces, a workspace, and fitness area, as well as the efficient guest rooms that he mentioned. This Moxie footprint, while, while having more keys, is roughly 75% the site coverage that the previously approved Element Hotel had, and maintains an additional 40 parking spaces on site due to its smaller footprint. I'm here with our, our design team, including John Ennis from BDE, who will be up next to describe the architecture, as well as Paul from our landscape architecture firm. Combined, our team has over 60 years of experience in the Bay Area, and I'm excited to hear your comments on our project to date.
So Jonathan Ennis from BDE Architecture, local firm in San Francisco. And that was a great presentation. We don't have many more slides, but we'll go into a little more detail of some of the slides. So again, these are examples of the Moxie brand that we're talking about around the world. So it's kind of a forward-looking.
Right, I was going to say there's a mobile mic somewhere.
I think this works for me. That works for you guys. So it's a, you can see from the slides, it's kind of a forward-looking, modern, kind of contemporary view on a hotel. Interesting, the ground floor, as was described in the previous presentation, ground floor is like the living room. It's kind of an open communal bar-like restaurant setting, where the check-in and checkout is done there. It's a little more informal, as far as how hotels are usually operated, but the ground floor is like a very fun place to be and hang out if you're staying in a hotel. Okay, so I won't really go through the site plan. I think you guys got that. If there's any questions about that, we're here to answer them. One of the things we're kind of excited about is that the, the design could take advantage of its, its position near the highway, and in the evening be lit in a kind of interesting and exciting way. A lot of this is going on in San Jose and San Francisco and around the world, using lighting on the outside of the building in the evening to kind of create some of the architecture. And also during the daytime, the kind of interesting folding massing that you saw before would have interesting play of shadow across it as the sun moves around and as you drive by. So we're looking, we're working on the massing more to create that interesting view and perhaps less of this, the curb frames that we were described, that were described previously. So one of the things is by taking the, I'll call them unit plans, but it's the guest rooms, and really shaping them in a certain way, depending on which side of the building you're on, and tilting them, number one, it just creates an interesting articulated facade. It's not just a blank wall. And it also, different rooms provide different views of different natural settings. So on one side, you have a more bay view, and on the other side, you'll have, have more the hills and mountains beyond. So that's why we're articulating that. So we're going to kind of get two things to happen when we do that. Building looks more interesting, and the views on different sides of the buildings are more taken advantage of, kind of like bay windows in San Francisco. So again, you can kind of see that, using the, the guest rooms to create the massing of the project and to create an interesting view with interesting interplay of light and shadow across the building at different times of the day. And as you move around the building, it would kind of fold in an interesting way and be kind of a lively frontage. So during the day, we think that'll provide a really interesting and unique visual highlight along the highway, and at night, the lights will do the same thing. This is a great slide. I think it explains the ground floor, so you can kind of see a library in there, and a bar and, and restaurant area, and a very glassy ground floor to, you know, kind of allow the warmth and the light to bleed out into the site, and also to have a outdoor living room connected to that, which you see in the landscape there, which Paul from Gazardo will go into more detail on. And here's Paul. So I'm here for any, any questions about the project?
All right, I'll try to grab that. Hi, I'm Paul Luteri with the Gazardo Partnership, or the Landscape Architects. One of the things we've tried to do is to really cement that indoor-outdoor relationship in the courtyard side of the building. So we have, this is kind of stretched unfortunately, but the, I don't know if you can kind of point. Where's the mouse? Here it is, all right. Thank you. So there's, there's the Port Cachere entry here, so you can drive under the building and you have, you have your direct access.
Need to get closer to the mic.
Yeah, I can't look there. It's kind of a gymnastics thing here, yes? I see that. Does that work? Does this work?
Yep. Try again.
It's on?
Yes, there you go.
That's better. Stand over here, then I can, I can, I can point a little bit better. All right. So there's, there's the welcome center that where you'll first enter, and then there's the cafe bar, and off the cafe bar, we have our sort of cafe lounge outside. The circle, the circle has a fire pit in the center of it. We have an area where you can have outdoor dining as part of that restaurant space. There's an overhead trellis with lights in it. And sort of you go to the next, the next space, we have our library court. There's a library here, and there's a little library patio. There's a raised bench through the tree growing through it. There's an image of kind of how that would look on the, on the imagery sheet. So it's kind of separate, but it's all kind of flows together. The spaces all flow together, and there's big openings to it. We have a, a screen wall that goes around the edge of it. You know, it's sort of just to, just to create a private feeling space, even though it's publicly accessible, and it's publicly visible as well. So we have, this is kind of stretched, unfortunately, but the, I don't know if you can kind of point. Where's the mouse? Here it is, all right. Thank you. So there's the port cachere entry here, so you can drive under the building and you have your direct access.
Need to get close to the mic.
Yeah, I can't look there. It's kind of a gymnastics thing here, yes? I see that. Does that work? Does this work?
Yep. Try again.
It's on?
Yes, there you go.
That's better. Stand over here, then I can, I can point a little bit better. All right. So there's the welcome center that where you'll first enter, and then there's the cafe-bar, and off the cafe-bar, we have our sort of cafe lounge outside. The circle has a fire pit in the center of it. We have an area where you can have outdoor dining as part of that restaurant space. There's an overhead trellis with lights in it. And sort of you go to the next, the next space, we have our library court. There's a library here, and there's a little library patio. There's a raised bench through the tree growing through it. There's an image of kind of how that would look on the imagery sheet. So it's kind of separate, but it's all kind of flows together. The spaces all flow together, and there's big openings to it. We have a screen wall that goes around the edge of it. You know, it's sort of just to create a private feeling space, even though it's publicly accessible, and it's publicly visible as well. There'll be a grove of trees in it. The tree planting will probably be more upright trees, since we're not trying to create a dense shaded environment. We're trying to get scale and give you a sense where you could, you could sit under this space and feel a little bit protected and sort of relate to the vegetation rather than to the adjacent buildings. That's just my bias on that. But we have this sort of, this decomposed granite area, this brown, and the white objects are seating elements that you'd be able to sit in that would sort of protect you from the wind and from the sun. You could rotate and sit in them however you'd like. They'd be portable, too. They'd all be movable. We've just drawn them in the locations we like. The purple things are also seating elements. And this, this area is a rubberized surface that could be used for yoga, outdoor fitness. It's directly connected to the, to the fitness room. So you have that, that space, and the circle is a garden that we were envisioning, you know, growing edible plants in it and maybe even being able to use them here. But if we can't use them here, the idea is that it'd still be either, you know, edible or flowers or butterfly garden, or it could evolve. But the idea is it's another separate kind of contemplative place you could go. And then, on a more mechanical kind of level, there's a stormwater treatment, something that comes up on every project, and we try to integrate that into the design, so it's not an add-on later. It all gets done right here in number 13. And there's a sort of another access point on this side to allow access from parking, allow exiting from the, from the space. We're looking at using, wrong way, there we go. You know, we're looking at using a sort of a fun paver pattern here. We're trying to pick up on the sort of idea of this hotel and that it's a fun place to be. And it's more whimsical sort of shapes, and you know, that's the, that's the fire pit idea. That's the, the library sort of raised deck. In our mode, that opening has a tree coming out of it and planting in it. And none of these are exactly what we're gonna do. I think you understand that they're, they're basic imagery. There's some, these lights are a little bit hard to see, but they'd be hanging in the trees, and they would, might create patterns on the ground. Might, the stars are, those stars are just, are just, are light shadows coming from above. I don't know that it'll be stars, but something like that is the idea of how we would, how we would add ambient kind of lighting to it, so it feels kind of cool. The yoga space, you know, our DG seating area, and some sense of how, of that these, the walls that we'd be using to separate the space would also have some fun element to them. It wouldn't just be blank, blank walls. So that's kind of, that's kind of the more, the more in-depth version of what you've already heard. And I think we have, we're available for any questions you have or any conversation.
Are we taking a public comment on this? All right, I'm gonna just speak a slip, sir.
Yeah, so I think at this point, then, if you have any questions of the applicant, explain anything else, anything from staff, if you want to give feedback or ideas, you know, feel free.
Okay. All right. Any commissioner want to make any comment on it? Questions for the applicants or the staff?
Looks lovely. I mean, especially the outdoor space. And this, anybody could go drive by the hotel and eat, hang out there, go to the bar. That's all another place for people in Millbrae around to go to. That's a good thing. I like the idea of the lighting at night and the way the building will change in the daytime. How does the design relate to your ability to attract customers? And it's got to be a huge part of your brand. I want you to be super successful. So just, you know, so long as the design still brings your, because the first thing we did was change your design, right? So to make sure you still get all your customers in. What else? I'm looking at my notes to see. I really liked that idea, when you said the rooms are tilted a little to give better views and more interest. That was, that was an interesting idea. I kind of like asymmetry, so that made me happy. I think that's it for now.
Okay, I'll go. On your, the board, not storyboard, color material board, there's a steel, some kind of weathered steel accent. Where, can you show where that would be?
I'll point it out on the screen.
Please do. Okay, so this is in the lower levels.
At the ground floor.
Okay, at the ground floor. And can you show the south elevation? Because I, I like the fact that from the highway, you'll be seeing that elevation at night, but I'd like to just see what it looks like. I think, I see it here, but it's not, the colors aren't really showing.
Let's see. Do we have the south?
Is that the south?
There we go.
Okay, but something more close up. So I know, I see that. So the south elevation close up, can you bring that up?
I don't think we have that slide in this presentation. I'm sorry, but it must be in your packet, I think? No?
I think, I do.
We don't have every slide in the presentation.
We had several iterations of it, so I thought I saw one that said "south." It doesn't have to be at night. I just want to see the south.
It's on sheet.
AP 400.
AP 400 in your packet? Is it on the bottom of the sheet or the top of the sheet? Bottom of the sheet.
This is the one I remember. Okay. So the colors, so the colors on there are going to basically be, because it looks different. So you have your front, the front one, and then the south-facing one does look different, but it's basically reversed from the front? Is that what we're looking?
That's right. So it's the same color pattern, it's just different proportions of each color on each side. So the north elevation has more of the white, and the south elevation has a little less.
Okay, and it has more, and then it has more of the color bars?
Yeah, and more of the...
What is that color called? Your Moxie color? Pink?
I'm not gonna say pink, but it's pinkish, yeah.
Pinkish, okay. Because I mean, well, I mean, it's your color, it seems like, because when you go to your other sites, it...
It's a branded color, yeah.
Bunch of men, so there's no color designation. I'm just curious. Okay, I mean, I, Moxie color, okay, we'll call it Moxie. I like it. I, I like it overall. I think it's great. I like the articulation. I think I would have agreed with staff that I wasn't that thrilled about the wavy. I think this kind of works. It's kind of a good way to make it clean, more modern. I do like that. I, I was wondering just if maybe, I would actually like to see a little bit more color in the, because you have the white, and it's just white on one elevator, on both sides. And I was just looking at your other projects in other places, like I think you have a slide on that, like your other, the Moxie concept, that one. And that one seems to have a lot more, a little more variation throughout. So that's one thing that, for me personally, I think that would, that would be nice, because it seems like it's, it's trying to be its own design. It's not the Western, Westin, it's not the Aloft. It's, so I personally feel like there's more room for some more color in there. But I agree with Commissioner Davis. I think it's lovely, and I love the, I like the, you know, switching up the rooms and all of that, because it gives it some character without going way overboard, and then you can take advantage of the views, and I think that's great. Commissioner Davis did ask about the client customer base, so who are you targeting here? Just curious.
I'm gonna let the owner talk about that. Yeah, so the Aloft and Westin play much more to our local airline crews, a lot of business travelers. The Moxie brand is a newer offering by Marriott, and it's typically more of a millennial traveler, more of a leisure traveler. Oftentimes, we'll get international travelers who are much more accustomed to these smaller guest room styles. So I would say there's much less of a singular dynamic, and people from kind of all different use types for being in the local area, less, much less focus on a business traveler and a younger demographic as well.
Okay, thank you. I think that's, that's about all I have at this point, but I like, I like it being more, again, I think there's some, I feel more comfortable with having a little bit more color or more variation in the, in the color, but design, besides just the white. But beyond that, I like it.
I like the idea of a smaller room. I mean, you can fit more rooms into this hotel, and I think nowadays, you know, having smaller rooms and fitting more travelers would certainly be a good thing. I'd like you to explain a little bit more and dive in a little bit more about the parking analysis you have. You seem to be seeking a parking variance. I'd like to see what kind of analysis have you done, what's your expectation in terms of travelers that comes in with vehicles versus those are in public transportations?
Exactly, yeah. So we kind of have, we have two things at play here. We have our existing site, which we own, and the great thing about that is we have all the data with parking. So as it stands today, we have a park-and-fly relationship, and so that kind of switch is turned on and off with, with demand, how many spaces we have for guests. Our parking study that we conducted with Fair Empires in the city essentially stated that when we are at our fullest capacity, which is weekday evenings, our existing hotels are parked at .85 to 1. The city ordinance is 1 to 1. And with the addition of this third hotel with the additional 208 keys, we are going to apply for a variance that is more or less .95 to 1. And additionally, our analysis has taken other Moxies in the United States, specifically the Denver Cherry Creek Moxie. And this demographic, as I described earlier, is much less likely to rent a car, more likely to use a ride-sharing service. And our adjacency to the airport also lends itself to a traveler who will stay for one night, uses the shuttle. So we do think they'll be using public transportation more often. We have a shuttle service that, that gets our customers to and from the hotel and the airport. And then, the prevalence of Lyft and Uber make kind of our ask feel very in line with what the demand will be. And we've provided Sam and Brad with an initial parking study from Fair Empires, which we'll go into the detail of all those numbers for you.
And as far as the timeline is concerned, when do you think you have an application in by?
So their, their actual, their application has been filed, yeah.
Yes. I guess what I'm trying to say is get to the point where we can actually have, you know, a little bit more, exactly.
Right, so I am talking to the manager about sort of the next steps if we're gonna do a preview with council, and then I think shortly thereafter, we're wrapping up the environmental analysis. So once that environmental analysis is done, we'd be ready to put that out for public review, and then, once we have public comments on that, we'd be ready for public hearings. So what we're doing right now is we're taking advantage of the time while the environmental review is being processed to do more outreach, and I think the applicant is also looking to have some outreach on their own as well.
Yeah, from our perspective, you know, the faster the better. This, this hearing specifically was an opportunity to get your feedback early and let our design team incorporate those comments before we got too far along in the process.
Okay, very well. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, and then just one thing I'd like to add, too, and staff has talked a little bit more about just some of the other details on, on the building. You know, specifically, there's a stair tower just to the left of the first image. Like, right now, it's just sort of clad in concrete block. I think, you know, we'll look at some other details like that, but we did really just want to get feedback from the commission, so appreciate your work on that. And I think that's very helpful to the project applicant and staff as we move forward into the next steps.
If nothing else, that's it for this item. Okay, very well. Thank you for the application. So we move on to public hearings. The first item on the agenda on the public hearing tonight is 846 Brookside Lane. It's for a design review permit to allow the renovation of a single-story residence and construction of a new second story to a residence in the single-family home, single-family residential R1 zoning district. Staff, please.
Thank you. Nestor Guevar, Assistant Planner with the City of Millbrae. Thank you, Commissioner Chair Fung. As you mentioned, the project address is 846 Brookside. The applicant is requesting a design review for renovation for a single story, and then an addition of a second story that's over 500 square feet. Project location, the project is located in the Millbrae Meadows neighborhood. It's Brookside Lane. It connects Richwood Drive, or Richwood Drive to Helen Drive. The existing home, it sits on a 6,141-square-foot interior lot. The existing home, it's a single story, like I mentioned, and it was built back in 1955. It includes two-car garage that's attached, and it's in the R1 zone. The renovations to the existing 2,124-square-foot home include a second story. And then, second story is 922 square feet. And since it's above that 500-square-foot threshold, it's why we have it here for the planning commission. The two images here show the existing house on the left, and then on the right, the proposed kind of 3D rendering of what it would look like with the, with the second story. The existing residence, it contains a one-story, single-family, 2,124-square-foot house. This includes three bedrooms that all have closets, two full bathrooms, a kitchen, a family room, a living room, and an attached two-car garage. The project would include renovations to that first story and then that second story addition. And here's the site plan for the first story. The proposed two-story home meets all development standards. That includes all the setbacks for the first story and then the stepbacks for the second story. The lot coverage and the FAR also met. FAR would increase from 34% up to 37%, where 50% is the maximum allowed, whereas FAR would increase from 34% as well to 52%, where 55% is the maximum allowed for, for R1. Here in the, in the site plan image, on the darker gray shade is where you can see the additions both to the first story and then that new second story. So the proposed work includes removing a stairway, or removing a bedroom in the first story to add that stairway, which you can see on the, on the proposed site, or the proposed floor plan. And the red box then also includes an addition in the front, so extending out the living room a little bit more in the front and then adding a new entrance. The proposed second floor plan, you'll see it includes three bedrooms, all with closets, two full bathrooms, that stairway coming from the first story, and then a new lobby as well. Here you see the image of the existing front elevation, where it's the single story that goes up to just above 13 feet in height. And then, here's the elevation for the second story. Again, it meets all development standards, including the maximum height. In R1 zone, the maximum height is 30 feet, and the proposal is for 21 feet and 6 inches. Here's just a look at the back of the house, then the proposed rear, and then a few more images with the, with the side, both left and right. It's going from, from yellow stucco, the new, the proposal will be to have it be different shades of gray, mostly light gray with a bit of darker gray as well. In terms of public notice, in accordance with the City of Millbrae's community development submitted requirements for residential development, a total of five proof-of-naver consultation forms were sent out. All five of those were brought back, supporting, supporting the project. So with all that said, staff recommends that the planning commission reviews the project, considers the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for the renovation of existing single-story residence and construction of a new second story on a single-family residence in the R1 zone, subject to the conditions of approval that are attached in your packet. Staff is available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Questions for staff?
I have just one, please. The stairway, it looks like it's a four, four feet wide, is it? On the first, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to double-check on that.
Okay, okay. I'm just wondering, is that how wide it needs to be, or is that a requirement, that it needs to be that wide, the way that it's taking up right now?
Maybe the applicant could...
Oh, okay, then never mind. That's fine, I'll ask later. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can the applicant come up? Can the applicant come up?
Sure. This one? Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Eric Chan from LCA Architects. And as Nestor said, the project was mainly a second-story addition, so the impact of the first floor, which was, a lot of the rooms were recently redesigned, was very small. So most of the budget goes to the second floor. Basically, we did want to preserve or respect the neighbors, so we didn't ask for any exceptions to the setbacks. So the second floor, 10-foot setback with a 5-foot first-floor setback, and then the same on the neighbor's side would require, would basically, there'd be about 30 feet between the neighbors. And you can see that most of the windows are actually facing forward and back, towards the backyard. So there's really a lot of privacy between the neighbors. In terms of the style, you can see that the original house had somewhat modern for that time design, but some of the big, wide window trims have kind of caused, it's led to a look that's a little dated now. So what we did was just tried to clean it up, enlarge the windows, and keep the overall proportions of the building and the building blocks. So that's... Yeah, I can answer any questions.
Questions for the applicants?
Because I'll ask that question now.
Okay.
So the stairway going up, is that the minimum required? That's why you were doing that?
Well, three foot would be minimum required. But we did take a bedroom and then convert it into a stairway. And so actually, a four-foot stair is much more generous and would feel a lot better than a three-foot stair. And since we're taking over one room and converting that whole room to a stairway, it was much nicer to use that whole room and then create a more spacious stair.
Okay. So was there any talk of maybe using some of that space to make the room, that bedroom that's remaining, and kind of make it a little bit bigger? Was that considered?
It was considered, but it would cost more to...
Minimal work, okay.
And having a nice, open stairway is...
Okay, that's fine. I don't have any other questions right now.
Nothing? Take us through the design of your roof a little bit, if you can.
Okay. Well, the roof is actually, the first-floor roof, which we're going to try to keep it exactly the same on a majority, except for the new portion of the roof, over the living spaces. But the garage, you can see, has kind of a pitched roof, and we wanted to have a more modern style, so we created a flat roof over the garage. And we think that actually meshes better with the overall modern aesthetic that we're going after.
Just from the exterior, it looks like, you know, if you look at the first story, it's, you kind of get this flat roof look on one side, whereas the top, second story, you got this sort of a hip roof.
Yeah, there is sort of a sloped area in the middle of the house. And then actually, when you're on the ground looking up at the house, even though there is quite a bit of a slope on the second floor, mainly for drainage, I think that the overall feel of the two roofs will be about the same. Because you're kind of looking up, and so the sloped roof up above will look flatter.
Yeah, because the left and the right-hand side portion of the first floor, in front of it, it's a flat roof.
Right.
Rear is sort of on a pitched roof. And then the top level, same thing, right? The second floor level.
Well, okay, so the front of the first floor, existing and proposed, are flatter. And so we're trying to preserve the style that was originally there. Over the living room in the middle and the back port, there's a natural pitched roof. And we're actually trying to keep that structure intact and then build the new second floor in the middle. And so the roof of the second floor actually matches part of the existing roof slope.
The rear.
Yeah, in the rear, in the second two-thirds.
Yeah, I'm not terribly crazy about how some of the flat roof mixed up with the rear roof in the rear, but I guess there's some sort of a value engineering that goes into this.
Yeah, that is...
Okay, well, we'll save that a little bit later. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you stay closed, I might have questions for you later on. I don't have any speaker slips. Does anybody want to speak on this project at all? No public comments? Okay, we'll close public comments section. Commissioners? Anybody want to get started? Ms. Joe?
Thank you for bringing a project that doesn't ask for an exception, because that happens quite a bit. I don't have any objections to it. I think it's good that the living room's coming out more and it's a little more balanced. And I don't see anything with it. That was my only question, was maybe instead of taking so much room for the stairs, you can utilize that space a little bit better. But if that's what they're choosing to do, I'm personally okay with it. I don't have any issues with the roof. Maybe I can't visualize it as well as Commissioner Fung. So from what I can tell, I'm fine with it, because I think that's existing is kind of like that anyway, and so you're just carrying that through. So I personally don't have an issue with the roof. You'd have to come up...
If you'd like to speak, if you'd like to address those comments, would you please go up?
Yeah, the roof that starts low and slopes up and towards the center and slows back towards the rear of the building, that's pretty common among a lot of houses in the neighborhood.
I like it. I have no thoughts on how, if I even wanted to fix the garage roof, how to do it. I don't know what you would do to it. I think part of why it might look odd is just the coloring. And we know that these aren't the real colors. It never works on a slide. It never works on a piece of paper. But the roof's so dark, the paint looks so dark, it's hard to tell where things stop and start. So I think perhaps in the real world, it's going to look better than it looks up there right now. So if he has suggestions on the roof, I'm letting him have it, because I haven't got it.
Is that all?
One other question. In this picture and a couple others, you have a whole bunch of trees on the left-hand side. Are you really going to plant those trees? Because they look lovely. Yes, okay.
Yeah, if I may, the applicants on the podium. I mean, I'm glad that we brought in a project that, you know, all the statistics falls within the guideline. It's good to know. It's also good to know that, you know, we've done a certain amount of outreach programs so that the owner-neighbors are in harmony with this design. I'm glad to see that. So in no ways am I going to try to get in the way and try to get statistics approved tonight. But I guess what I'm trying to say in the end is that, looking at the roof line, it's just kind of very unconventional is how you see have, how you have this sort of a little bit of a parapet going up where the garage is, right? Because I'm looking at your 3D rendering and your isometric views.
Right.
You sort of have a small parapet that goes up or around, you know, sort of the left-hand corner of where your garage is, and then you have a pitched roof in the back that is the existing portion of the house, right? Or the garage is also the existing portion of the house, isn't it?
Yeah, we are not moving the garage.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, we aren't moving the garage.
Yeah, so the garage is the same.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that once we decided to, you know, when we go up with the second floor with the setbacks...
Yeah.
And that second-story block, when we did create that on some of the initial model studies, that gable-type roof of the existing garage just didn't look very good. So we decided to make a change there and really just simplify it.
Okay. That's what the applicants want, and I guess that's fine. But as far as waterproofing goes, you know, is it stucco that goes all the way up to that parapet?
Well, yeah, it'll be stucco and flash pretty well with metal flashing.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure you understand that. That's, that kind of stuff tends to leak pretty bad, so you can't stucco all the way up. The choice of windows and doors, what type of material?
It's a Marvin product. It's an integrity series, which is kind of a...
Fiber glass.
It's a fiberglass composite that really looks more like a wood than, say, a vinyl. It's not a vinyl-type window.
Front door?
Probably wood.
Garage?
The garage door, we're thinking wood right now as well.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
How about motion? Hey, buddy?
Motion to allow the renovation of a single-story residence and construction of a new second story to a residence in the single-family zoning district, subject to the conditions at the back.
Second?
Your votes, please. Three to duffings. You've been approved, congratulations. Subject to a 10 days' right of appeal. The next item on the agenda is 221 Palm Avenue. It is for a design review permit to allow a second-floor renovation and a third-floor addition to a two-story residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required upper-floor size setback of a residence in a single-family R1 zoning district. Mr. Fielding?
Okay, good evening, commissioners. This is Sam Fielding, Senior Planner with City of Millbrae. This project is located at 221 Palm Avenue between Hillcrest Boulevard and Chadbourne Avenue in the Highland subdivision within the south-central area of Millbrae. The property is a 5,520-square-foot interior lot, single-family residential. The architectural style of the existing home and homes in the neighborhood are of a Mediterranean style. Lots of split-level homes with a mixture of open gable, hip, and cross-hip-type roofs. Many of the homes built in the 1930s. The homes have exteriors material consisting of a combination of stucco and cement plaster and clay-tile roof parapets. The subject property is located on the west side of Palm Avenue, facing toward the northeast, and there are no bay views from the site due to its location on relatively flat terrain east of the hills, located west of Spur Trail, which is right here. This is an existing subject property, and this is the rendering showing the proposed rear addition. The existing residence is a two-story home with an entry porch, two-car garage, and open kitchen to a front living room with fireplace, kitchen nook, three bedrooms with closets, two bathrooms, and one uncovered rear deck with stairs to the backyard. No changes are proposed for the existing front driveway, lawn area, and plantings. The existing residence provides a two-car garage as required for the single-family R1 residential district. The proposed project includes the following renovations in addition to the lower first-floor, main second-floor, and new upper-third floor. Because this is a split-level home, the rear addition is technically a third floor. However, it's a split-level design home. The lower floor will include a relocation of the stairway accessing the main second-floor dining room, and the existing side-by-side two-car garage will remain unchanged. The main second floor extends and enlarged the kitchen with access to a rear uncovered deck in addition of a skylight in the hallway connecting the existing bedrooms. And the new upper-third floor will be a new master bedroom, bathroom, walk-in closet, and stairway down to the main floor, or main second-floor hallway. The existing front yard landscaping, consisting of a grass lawn bordered by low-plant hedges, plants, and two trees on either side of the property of the front yard, will remain. The front driveway and walkway will remain unchanged. This project complied with the public noticing requirements for Millbrae, and the neighbor consultation forms were sent to all adjacent property owners, and they were returned all in support of the project. This project is requesting, the applicant is requesting a setback exception. This is requested to create an upper floor within the rear split-level lower roof area to integrate with the existing home architectural design and be compatible with the neighborhood character. This slide here shows the site plan, and the red boxed area is the area of the upper-floor, third-floor addition. This slide here indicates the existing lower-floor plan, and then the proposed lower-floor plan, which will add this rear deck area. There's actually a first crawl space here, but it'll be part of the addition for the upper area. And then this is the access stairway to the upper floor. This is the existing and new main second floor. Again, the red box highlights the area of the addition, the extension toward the back to add the larger kitchen. And then this is a trestle. This is, it's already added up at the back here. And then this is a new deck, rear deck with stairs to the backyard. And this is the upper-third floor addition at the rear. And on the slide here, we've highlighted, staff has highlighted the portion where the setback exception is requested. So along here, the required setback is seven feet. So if the applicant were to meet the setback requirements, the second floor, this master bedroom would actually end right here, it would be a lot smaller area. And so instead, the applicant is requesting a 2-foot, 6-inch setback. So there is a setback for this portion. It would be a 2-foot, 6-inch setback for 18 feet, 6 inches linear feet along this stretch here, where there's seven feet required. And then this portion here, there'd be zero setback for linear feet of 10-foot, 8 inches, this portion. We have the new master bedroom, the bathroom, walk-in closet, and then the stairway going downstairs. This is the existing and proposed left-west elevations. And you can see the step back along here, and then this is the portion where there's a zero, the floor is directly above the other floor here. So this portion here is where the setback exception is being requested. And this is the existing and proposed right elevation. And this is the existing and proposed front elevations. And then the existing and proposed rear elevations is indicating the addition at the rear, this location. These are the color material board, this color material board which you have at your desk, and basically looking at clay-tile roofs that would match the existing roof tile, windows that would match, the Milgard vinyl windows that would match the existing windows at the house, and then the trim color artichoke here, we have a banana cream for the cement-plaster wall. So the staff has reviewed this project for the design review permit findings and believes it meets the findings for findings A through D in Section 10.05.2500 of the Millbrae Code, and also the setback exception findings 1 and 2. and also the setback exception findings 1 and 2. At this time, staff is recommending that the planning commission review the project and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review for a second-floor renovation and third-floor addition to a two-story residence and a setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required upper-floor side setback of a residence in a single-family R1 zoning district at 221 Palm Avenue, subject to the attached conditions of approval. I'm available to answer any questions and comments, and we also have the applicant, the architect here to present the project and answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Feeding?
I just have one. I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Fielding or Mr. Weisner, but these split levels always throw me off because the descriptions go back and forth between it's a second floor versus it's a third floor versus all of that. So in the chart that we have, when it says second floor, you're referring to the addition, which in the report we talk about as a third floor? I just want to get my.
That's correct. So the addition itself would be the upper third floor.
Okay. But then when you're giving us the chart that says a second-floor setback, counting those, that's the third floor that you're talking, you're calling the third floor, right? Okay. I just think it's good to get some consistency because it take, you know, just, we're calling it third floor in the verbiage.
Yes.
And then the chart, it's called the second floor. And I get that it's a split level. I just, you know, I've, I think it's good to get a little bit of consistency. So the first floor is, on the right side, it ends up being the main level bedrooms that are above a garage.
No, the first floor would be the ground level. That's the first floor.
Okay.
Then the second floor is the main level, and then the third floor is the addition.
Right, but then when you're counting on this, on the bedroom side above the garage, that's actually called the first floor in here, right? So when you're saying a second-floor right setback, right now it's showing as a 14 feet, six inches in the chart. So that, to me, sounds like 14 feet, six inches is actually that additional quote-unquote "third" bedroom. I mean, third floor, right? You don't have a 14-foot, six-inch second-floor right setback if the second floor is the rooms above the garage. You don't. And so I'm just saying it's confused. I mean, I get it because I'm looking at the charts and I get all of that, but I think it's just the terminology gets really confusing, and it takes a little while to wrap your mind around it, and the chart is not, you know, at that point, so.
Yeah, and as you're saying that, I just, I'm thinking that what we'll do in the future is we'll be very clear in the description of how the house is, but for the metrics, we'll be very clear about what is first and second floor, you know? I mean, unless there's a true, clear third story.
Right.
Then we can get into that. But I hear you loud and clear because it is confusing. But just real quick, because I was trying to put my head around the same thing, and I just, I think when you look at on page A8, under that building, section B, the lateral section, it's really telling. That really helps. Because all we're talking about is a very slight crawl space that is throwing everything off.
Right, and you have a very small crawl space on the left side, and then you have a garage, a full-fledged garage. And so, again, I get it, but I'm just saying the terminology gets thrown off, and then the chart gets a little bit strange because we're talking about a technical third floor, but then for setback requirements, we're calling it a second floor. So I just would like to have that a little more. Again, I mean, I can, I can go through it and look through all the charts and figure it all out, but I think for the sake of also, you know, if we need an exception or not really, I mean, the true, the real, on the right side, the second floor is actually the bedrooms because they're above the garage, right? And it's, so it's an existing, also not flush with the garage, I believe, right? So it doesn't really have a setback itself, which is fine. I'm not, I don't have an objection with it, but I'm saying it doesn't really have an exception itself, so. And it's existing, so I don't have an issue with that. But I just wanted to kind of be more clear on that. I don't have any questions beyond that.
Is the garage really 253 square feet? Two-car garage?
462.
462.
Yes.
None on the chart.
I know.
Yeah.
It's 200 something on the chart. Yep.
The garage does meet the clearance dimensions for a two-car garage. And we have on the floor plan, AC point 2, it indicates the garage area.
That's 18 feet, 2 inches wide by 23 feet in length.
Just, you know, again, the chart, that we're supposed to just get all the nice summary details and data.
Page 4 you're referring to.
Yeah. Garage area required existing, 253.
Yeah, there's, there's no change to the garage, to the garage area.
Right, but just the number you plop down there is not.
Oh, I see.
Not right.
Yeah, 414.
Right, thank you.
Okay, staff will correct that.
Anything else for Mr. Feeding?
Nope.
Thank you, Sam. Can we have the applicant, please?
Good evening. If it helps, we get confused as to whether it's called upstairs-downstairs as well. Still haven't found the right language for it. So with the owners, Ian Fisher, my wife, Yuri Suzuki, we've lived in Millbrae for 16 years, just looking to make a bigger house as our family grows. But we'll let our architect, Robert Madan, answer all the technical questions.
Good evening, commissioners and planning staff. Robert Madden, architect, here to answer any questions that you might have.
Anything for the applicant, Mr. Maiden? No? Davis? No? Just stay close. Thank you, Mr. Maiden. Okay. Any public comments for? I know. For 221 Palm, anybody wish to make a public comment about it? I don't have any speakers slip in front of me. Okay, no public comments tonight. Commissioners?
I'll start.
Please do.
This is the prettiest rendering I've ever seen. I wish they all looked like this. And the house looks beautiful. I don't have any problem with the setback. It makes sense in this case. You know, our rules exist to make some sense in our world, but the real world, you know, it's okay to break them when it makes perfect sense. The neighbors all love it. I have no problems with this project.
Is that it? Okay, Ms. Cho?
I actually did have just one quick question. In the lower floor, there's a family room there right now. The access is, how do you get there? From the garage?
Yeah, you can go from the garage.
Okay, and then you have new stairs coming up, so those are going to go into where?
That's going to be the kitchen nook area.
Okay, so they go straight up to the kitchen? Okay, great. That's it, thank you. Just curious.
Reversing, excuse me, but.
Oh, I'm reversing. You need to use a mic, I don't know.
Yeah, if you look at A2.
A2.
Yeah. On the proposed lower floor plan. We're taking it, we're shifting it towards the front of the house. Oh, sorry, we're shifting it towards the front of the house.
You're shifting what towards?
That access to the little room down there.
What's the?
The room is like a little family room.
Right, current, there's no access, right?
No, there is currently a stair. It's in the, it's in the area towards the back of the house, and we're going to do some extension there.
Got it.
So we decided to shift it towards the front and allow us to occupy that space a little better.
Kitchen, got it.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. I echo Commissioner Davis. I don't have any issue with it. I think it looks much, it'll be functional, especially the whole split level. All those homes have all those issues, so, you know, definitely it makes sense for this one to do the exception, so I don't have any objections to it. And I do like the rendering, it's really pretty. Thank you.
I wish I can claim credit for it, but there's somebody else that does really nice work.
That's all for now, thank you. Is that it? How about motion? Does anybody want to make one?
Okay, I make a motion to approve the design review permit for the second-floor renovation and third-floor addition to the two-story residence at 221 Palm Avenue, including the setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required upper-floor side setback according to the conditions and findings of the staff report and subject to the conditions therein.
Your votes, please. The vote is three to zero. Congratulations. Subject to a 10 days' right to appeal. Okay, almost there. Can we get some staff update, please?
Sure. Couple things I wanted to let the commission know is, you'll recall, and we had a very nice conversation on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance a couple meetings ago. That is scheduled with the city council tomorrow night to get their guidance. Since, even since the last time that we met and had our conversation, there's been legislative changes that are pending, and so we're, staff is actively looking at what the impacts on accessory dwelling unit ordinance may be. So just wanted to let you know that that is still moving along, and we're hoping to get guidance to prepare that ordinance from council tomorrow night. That's one thing. The other is, I know there have been requests on a couple occasions to try to do a better job of getting the information about projects onto our city website. We had a conversation today, just thought I'd let the commission know about a much more automated system that integrates with mapping so that we'd be able to push that data out to the website and allow the public to search in a variety of different ways, primarily by map. You could look and see where permits are, what permits are happening on your block, and then get information. So we're working forward on that as a long-term solution, and then also hopefully in the next, I think, couple weeks, we're ready to go live with sort of a new updated spreadsheet list that will hold us over until we have a more automated system. So those are a couple of the work efforts that we're working on, along with everything else. And that's my, that's my update for the evening.
Thank you. Any commissioner wish to make any comments? Ms. Cho?
I was actually invited to see an ADU being built in the back of somebody's house, and there is one street in Millbrae right off of Larkspur. I won't name it right now, but they have three in a row ADUs in the back, and they're building a two-bedroom, two-bath, 1,200-square-foot vaulted ceiling. It's going to look beautiful. It's for their parents to be able to live in their backyard, and that was kind of cool. So we'll see how that works out. But I thought that was interesting. I'm not going to be here for the first, is that announcement? Maybe that's an announcement.
Well.
Okay. Well, I won't be here for November 4th meeting, so that's a comment announcement of mine.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
What date was that?
November.
The first meeting of November, November 4th.
Nothing for you, Commissioner Davis?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Announcements? Does anybody have any announcements to make? Quiet? We're all good? So I guess we're done. Thank you so much.
Then I can go home.
Eight twenty?
Thank you.